I now call this meeting of the City Council to order. Do we have a closed session report?
Mayor, members of the City Council, I have nothing to report out.
Okay, thank you. Al, would you do us the favor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? Thank you.
Have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review? Seeing none?
I move that all resolutions and ordinance presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Roll call, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none, we can proceed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item two, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is item 3A1, appointment of Simi Valley Arts Commissioners and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is here to present this item. City Council, the Simi Valley Arts Commission annually reviews both the operating budget and the operating plan for the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center prior to City Council approval. The commission is also tasked with reviewing capital purchases, recommendations, grants, and other opportunities to make the arts accessible for all members of the community. Membership on the Arts Commission is comprised of seven members, including two City Council members, one Simi Valley Arts Center Foundation representative, and four City Council-appointed public members, as well as one alternate member. All public members serve staggered two-year terms of office. There will be two City Council-appointed vacancies, two regular members on the Arts Commission on June 30th, 2023. The city initiated a recruitment on February 20th, 2023, and two applications were received. On April 3rd, 2023, the City Council selected Councilmember Littler to serve on the interview committee with a continuing Arts Commissioner. Councilmember Littler and Arts Commissioner Dantona interviewed the applicants on May 9th, 2023, and nominated two for appointment to two-year terms on the Arts Commission. These terms begin July 1st, 2023, and conclude on June 30th, 2025. Would the following nominees come forward as I call your name? Becky Savell? Burton Weinstein? It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint these nominated applicants to the Simi Valley Arts Commission. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Do I get a motion?
I move to approve and the mayor appoint the two applicants nominated to the Simi Valley Arts Commission for two-year terms.
Now, second, they are both outstanding people who have been serving and will continue to serve, so thank you, thank you.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3A2, ratification of the appointment of a representative to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina will present this item as well. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council, again. The Ventura County Area Agency on Aging, VCA AAA, represents the concerns of senior citizens countywide. It provides leadership, advocacy, and visibility for persons age 60 and over within Ventura County. The VCA AAA Advisory Council is comprised of two representatives from each city within the county and serves to advise the VCA AAA on matters related to persons age 60 and older. Each city's Council on Aging's executive board selects two representatives to serve two-year staggered terms on the advisory council, which are then ratified by the respective city councils and appointed to the 20-member VCA AAA Advisory Council. The term of one of the city's two representatives to the VCA AAA Advisory Council will expire on June 30th, 2023. The Simi Valley Council on Aging began soliciting applications on April 10th, 2023 for this upcoming vacancy and closed the recruitment on May 5th, 2023. During this period, four interest forms were received. On May 8th, 2023, the Council on Aging voted to recommend the appointment of Al Brown, subject to the City Council's ratification. Would Al Brown please come forward? If ratified, this will be Al Brown's first term commencing July 1st, 2023, and concluding June 30th, 2025. It is the recommendation of the Council on Aging that the City Council approves and the mayor appoints Al Brown as a representative to the VCA AAA Advisory Council. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
I would love to move that we go forward with the appointment. This gentleman does so much for our community and continues to. In fact, is this your 20th or 21st public service pin you've received?
Second.
I made the motion, actually, and Rocky seconded it.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3A3, appointment of Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, Paratransit Advisory Committee members. And Deputy Public Works Director of Transit, Ben Gonzalez, is here to present this item.
A recent recruitment was conducted to fill the terms of one member in one alternate position on the Americans with Disabilities Act Paratransit Advisory Committee. On May 9th, Mayor Thomas and Councilmember Kavanaugh interviewed three applicants and nominated two new members for appointment to the committee. The nominated individuals are not present tonight, however, I will announce their names for the mayor-ing City Council members. Karen Babango, member, Sinta Roberts, alternate. It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint the candidates nominated to the ADA Paratransit Advisory Committee. This concludes staff reports, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
I'll move their approval and you appoint.
Second.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3A4, adoption of a resolution ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of the resident commissioner to the area housing authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of a resident commissioner to the area housing authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. And Management Analyst Danielle Franco and Deputy Environmental Services Director Mara Mott are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura requests your endorsement of a resident commissioner to represent the housing authority's public housing residents. The Area Housing Authority serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction appoints two commissioners, and one resident commissioner is appointed at large to represent all seven jurisdictions. Following an open nomination period, review of the application from the interested candidate among the eligible public housing residents, and subsequent interview of Ms. Angela Bradley, a public housing resident, Ms. Angela Bradley was selected by the Area Housing Authority for another two-year appointment. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the resolution ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of Ms. Angela Bradley, who was unable to attend tonight, for a two-year term as a resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners effective June 1st, 2023, through May 31st, 2025. This concludes the presentation, staff is available for questions.
No questions, by move that we adopt Resolution number 2023-27, ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of Ms. Angela Bradley for the two-year term concluded on May 31st, 2025, as the resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners.
Second. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening, Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the City Council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a car was submitted to speak for this public statements item 4 for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The first speaker is Eli Sorkin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable City Council members. My name is Eli Sorkin. I'm a founder and CEO of Around AV Transit Media. I reside in the city of Tarzana. And Around AV Transit Media is the advertising contractor for AVTA, which is Antelope Valley Transit Authority up in Lancaster. And we've been contracted with them since 2013, and essentially, we're in charge of selling, producing, and installing bus advertising on their local and commuter buses. And I'm here to briefly talk about and hopefully generate interest in establishing a bus advertising program in the city of Simi Valley. There are three main benefits of having a local transit advertising program. The first and foremost is the benefit to the local businesses in the community. Advertising their services and products gives the local businesses a new marketing media and a new advertising canvas. Currently, the only out-of-home media available to your local businesses are a few billboards and bus shelters. And while they're both great media, incorporating buses into the overall media mix will allow the local merchants to have a much broader reach and frequency of advertising. Buses are superior to billboards and bus shelters in two ways. First, they're constantly moving, thereby gathering attention of motorists and pedestrians. And second, they're at eye level, so that people don't have to glance up and to the right as they do for billboards. The second benefit is that to the city and/or to the transit authority, it allows the city to sponsor various local and community events by offering in-kind sponsorships in the form of bus advertising. For example, AVTA up in Lancaster has tremendous leverage when it comes to sponsoring local events like fairs and festivals, because they're able to offer to various communities, community organizations, and vendors bus advertising at no cost, and thus providing sponsorship to these events. The last benefit is financial. The partnership that we have with AVTA is based on revenue sharing, which is kind of the standard model for bus advertising around the country. And we have generated over $1.5 million for AVTA since we started. And while that number pales in comparison to all the federal funding which transit authorities receive, nevertheless, it represents a significant amount which the transit authority and/or the city has full discretion on how to use. And for example, AVTA chose to create a position of a marketing director, and these funds pay for the salary of that person, so it's win-win partnership. I kind of brought a presentation, but I don't think I'm able to show it, so I'm going to skip that part. So, in conclusion, I'm hoping for the city of Simi Valley to follow other local municipalities and consider issuing an RFP for its local bus advertising program. AVTA can be reached for reference for any kind of questions. They're a great model for bus advertising. They're also the first bus fleet in the country to go fully electric as of this year, so they're on top of their game. And I don't know if I'm allowed to answer any questions, but I can, but then my time's up. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, thank you.
John Lapper?
Mayor and City Council, wow, 399-page budget and a full consent calendar. Absolutely tough to process for the residents and the City Council members with the current process. Briefly, I'd suggest a public committee to be involved in the process instead of the current review process of two weeks and a public presentation to a handful of residents. A panel should answer all the committee's concern and those of neighborhood council. I have little doubt the budget will be accepted as written as the City Council members were afforded the same time element as residents. Three minutes of a public statement is worthless, and public statements emailed by me never receive a response. Briefly, my concerns, major street repairs or rehabilitation by repaving. This has been neglected for almost 12 years, and had it not been for federal funds, little would have been done from the general funds. Considering the City Council is considering approval of consent item 6 Monday tonight for $622,000 to resurface two-tenths of a mile on Alamo from Sequoia to Lemon, the $2.5 million budgeted for major street repairs for fiscal '23-'24 appears to be a drop in the bucket, especially as stated maybe and starting in July 2024. Isn't it time SB 1 gas tax revenues used by the city solely for residential street repairs, $3.1 million, be used for roads that receive the major amount of traffic? I can't imagine two-tenths of a mile on Alamo is the priority over Cochrane Street and LA Avenue at the minimum. And to bring out all that equipment for two-tenths of a mile for $622,000, please tell me I am missing something. Next topic is the transit budget. Again, capital expenditures for electric buses of $2.5 million, $10 million next year to circle the valley probably 90% of the time empty. Who moves more people in Simi Valley, our buses or our major streets? While the bus system is necessary, isn't it time to reevaluate traffic routes and times that people need the bus and the cost-effectiveness of the current big bus system? I would hope dial-a-ride or smaller buses are part of this $12.5 million expenditure. Sadly, Simi Valley is not a big bus-friendly transit. And lastly, I'll just bring up my favorite thing for the last two years, more motorcycle traffic patrol officers, which I understand is going to be discussed later tonight, I hope, because my concern was I didn't see anything from Chief-in-Chief Short's budget plan, goals, or action plans about the motorcycle patrol officers. Thank you very much.
Guadalupe Jasso?
Hi, my name is Guadalupe Jasso. I live in Simi Valley in District 3, where I have been for the past two decades. Having grown up in Simi Valley, I consider our city to be a great community for families. I hope to establish my own home and raise a family here. However, as I'm nearing my 30s, despite working two jobs and saving money, I'm unable to start my own journey of independence here in the place where I grew up because of the lack of affordable housing options. So I am still living with my parents, as so many of my friends in the same age group are as well. I see many of my friends moving away to other states or living in cramped and overcrowded residences. My friends who I see leaving here don't want to leave because Simi Valley is such a wonderful place with so much to offer. But no matter how nice it is, I and many others are in a position we don't want to be in because we don't have the luxury to pay high prices towards mortgages or monthly rents. There's many hard workers in this city that have multiple jobs but still struggle to afford housing costs and don't have enough left over for other expenses such as food or healthcare. Some of our own city employees cannot all afford to live here, making commuting their only option to come to work. So what I'm asking is for you, City Council members, to make affordable housing a top priority. I understand that the city doesn't build housing, but you can and should make it a top priority to encourage development of more affordable housing, including for ownership and for rental. That includes dedicating more funding to address this issue. I'm not necessarily asking for you to invite all of Southern California to come live in Simi Valley. I'm just asking you to serve the needs of local people who live here now and are struggling right before you. Allocating more of the budget to affordable housing programs will provide our city a better chance to thrive and remain strong. Because if housing continues to be as expensive as it is now, many of us will continue to leave. And my question is what will Simi's future look like and the economy if there's no longer young consumers, workers, or families that can contribute to the city? So I'm just asking if you can please do everything in your power to make Simi Valley a place we can all call home. Thank you.
Maria Negrete Cruz? Crystal Sloan?
Hello, my name is Crystal Sloan, and I'm from Simi Valley. I grew up in Simi Valley my whole life, too. I think that's a really important story she just shared, it'll help me. I've seen it change. I've seen our open spaces turn into failed plazas time and time again, malls and shopping centers. centers. I commuted working for the motion picture industry for 13 years until an illness and a combined condition of the pandemic led to the loss of my job. I had two different years being stuck on disability and exhausting my resources in the form of savings, health insurance, and hour qualifications for other forms of support. I've also been independent completely since I was 18 and on my own. I know, let's see, I'm now working in town, ironically, working to aid others in resource insecurity, and I make as much as my rent is per month, nothing more. Each day, I go to bed with the worry of losing my roof and with the education of how terrifying and difficult it is to live on the streets. I wonder if the drug use, particularly among the youth, is fueled by the continued lack of independent opportunities, increased economic pressure, and growing feelings of general insecurity. I do not see confident, happy peers. I see them dull-eyed, disenchanted, and hyper-focused on survival and entertainment, leading to unproductivity and addiction. I've seen this town do big business. I've seen this town beautiful and many things to celebrate, but for the point that we're making. I've seen this town hold rent intentionally high to keep plazas empty, like the one on Adam Road and Tappo Street. I had a friend who wanted to open a art school, and he could not because he could not afford to be in town. I understand the increased population mandate being satisfied by this operation, but I worry if it might not be negligent of what the city and its citizens need. Everyone is leaving who grew up here. The young people move on seeking more sensible opportunity, but who will be there to work at all of the recently developed and already established senior living communities? I beg you, market to the youth and young families by having affordable housing a top priority. I've lived in my duplex off Adam Road for 10 years. I moved in paying $1,285, which is the true reality of its worth. I now pay $2,091. I make $2,000 a month doing important work that is crucial to the community. I have termites, holes in the floors, no isolation, four leaks in four different rooms, which I found out this season with all of the rain, because the roofs need to be replaced, which they won't invest in, and so many other structural issues, including mold and rats. Nothing is, which means I'm putting a lot of money also personally into the work and the things needed to be done around the property. They are now raising them to $2,600 for people that are recently moving in, and if that happens and they increase mine to that rate, I will lose my home and I will have nowhere to go. Sorry. I'm here to represent anyone in my position or who may face this challenge. Please choose to look through the eyes of the culture and community of this town because it's beautiful, rather than the profit because the future of this town depends on it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melanie Volbrick. I'm representing the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. This is my first time here and just getting the lay of the land and learning all about it and learning what is all incorporated into running the city. I am supposed to announce that we are having our Simi Valley breakfast this Friday, and it starts at 7:00, 7:30. So it's at the Best Western Posada Royale. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 4A, city council comments regarding public statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sorkin, that's an interesting idea, and you may not know that we can't actually respond to your proposal or have an interaction with you about your proposal. One thought that I had that also dovetails into one of the comments of Mr. Lapper, since most of the people riding our transit system are on the outside of the bus, there would be high visibility for your product, and maybe we need to address that at a different Ms. Peraso, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and Ms. Sloan, thank you for bringing those stories forward. It's not lost on the city that this is a problem, that this is something we have to deal with. The complexity of it is, it's big. It's not a simple, hey, throw money at it. But please know that we see it, we feel it, and we are working to address it. And, Mr. Mayor, that is the end of my comments.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. Appreciate your thoughts, Councilmember Rhodes, and I appreciate the comments of everyone today. And as representing District 3, I particularly speak and understand the struggle. And I know that that, that there, within that district, and of course, within all of Simi Valley, there is a lot of need for affordable housing. And I'm pleased that there have been efforts on behalf of the city that most of the, most of new apartments come with affordable element, but unfortunately, it really is a drop in the bucket, and I realize that. And it is a hard, hard question to resolve, but I appreciate your comments, your thoughts about it, the concerns. Crystal, I understand exactly what you speak. In fact, I have several young adults living with me who will be probably for quite a while because they can't afford to go elsewhere, and it's a problem that we all work on together. But the solution is not easy, and because obviously, housing is built by the private market. We can provide inducements, incentives. There are some things we can talk about further and will, I believe so at this level, that may be induced developers to provide more. But anyway, I do know, and I want to commend the city, that in its housing element, we have met the numbers that they've encouraged and ways to allow more housing to be built, but it doesn't solve the problem. And so we will continue to address it, and it's unfortunately, it's a problem that much of California faces, but particularly when you live in a lovely community, what the solution is, there isn't an easy answer. But thank you for being here this evening, sharing your stories, and please feel free to reach out to us personally, and we can talk more about it. So thank you.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank everybody who came out and spoke also. I think I responded to somebody's email. I sounded very familiar to some of the emails we got about the public comments or just emailing to our mailboxes themselves. I can't really go over it much further than Councilmember Lister covered. We do in the city have first-time buyer assistance programs. Have you looked into that kind of thing through the city? We do have a first-time buyer assistance program through the city of Simi Valley, don't we?
We're starting it now.
Yes. But we've had it before, too.
We have in the past.
Yes. So there are those options also to look at. Like Councilmember Lister said, I sit on statewide board, I'm sorry, it is a statewide board, statewide board, Southern Sixth County Board, and the Ventura County Boards. Housing is a complicated problem across the state, and that's not a cop-out from the city of Simi Valley. It's just that we do give incentives to developers to build low-income housing. So does the state. They give tons of them. No developer is coming forward to take advantage of those. You see the apartment complex at Alamo and Tappo. I know this might be going a little long for the city attorney, but he took advantage of low-income housing credits and stuff to build that property also. But the problem is that there's a, it's like everything else in the state. It gets named one thing, but it really means something else. Low income doesn't mean low income. It means below the median what they're going to charge for the rent for that apartment. So if they're charging $2,200, like somebody was saying, they pay for rent, that developer applies for a low-income grant from the state or a low-income concession, that means he can charge $1,800 or $1,900 a month for that apartment. It doesn't mean it's low income. So there's a lot of things that go on in this state which are very hard to explain. And the first place, good place to start is with us, because it gets you used to talk in front of people and stuff like that. We want to hear it. People that really need to hear this are your state senators and state assembly people. Thanks again.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My council, other council people pretty much covered everything that I wanted to, including the affordable housing that's coming into our new apartment complex. There is also some proposed, in the planning stages, other affordable housing through, that the city is participating very heavily in the finance area. So there are things coming out there. There's never going to be enough, and I hate to say that, but there isn't, but we can only try. And like Mayor Protem Judge said, unfortunately, what we consider affordable housing is going to be almost close to market-rate rents in some of these buildings, and the city has no control over that. All we can do is keep trying to reach out to those developers that will do some of the affordable housing and maybe get more than 5% or more than 10% out of 250. So, but starting with us, what Mayor Protem Judge said, I want to say Mike, whichever, what he said is really the best way to start with us, because if nothing else, we might have resources that you can also utilize and go to. So thank you all for coming out. Mr. Lapper, I read your email, and yes, I agree on, I even questioned the distance on the repaving on Alamo with the city manager this evening to kind of get an explanation on that. And I also think we will be, the chief has ideas going on in his budget that we don't all know about, so I won't speak for the chief because I don't know for sure yet either. But thank you, everybody, for coming out. I do like to hear the young people come out and speak about what your struggles are so that, you know, we know that in the back of our mind in case something comes up, in case we hear something. You know, we have Many Mansions, we have Cabrillo Economic, we have Habitat for Humanity, Overtime, that has done different programs throughout the city and the county. So those are kind of what we rely on for the affordable housing. It is hard to get a developer to come in. We don't have the property. As much property is available in out-of-states for affordable properties, affordable developers to build on. So they're tending to concentrate in places that have larger floor space. Would that be how you would say it, Brian? Yeah, larger plots of land. We don't have it. Here, if you notice, everything we're building is going up. And I told somebody I was speaking with at a luncheon a couple months ago, I said, unfortunately, we've made Simi Valley such a great place to live. Everyone wants to live here. So, you know, it's a great thing for us, and we don't have big plots of land left to develop, so everything you're seeing is going to be two- and three-story and possibly four-story in the future. So we just have to be able to moderate that and try and fit it so, ensure it fits into the neighborhoods as well as we are able. So some of you, if you understand housing, we don't have the final say-so in the development if they utilize all the concessions for affordable housing. So I know we say that over and over again, but it's the truth. So, but thank you all for coming out and speaking to us this evening. Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you, everybody. Regarding the bus advertising, I have a million questions I'd love to ask, and it's not the time or place, but I would love to at some point in time. Affordable housing, we do talk about it all the time, but I agree with something I was going to bring up. The first-time buyer program that we have coming, it's not, it's almost ready to go. It's going to be a real good opportunity, and so definitely look into that. Let's see, John, your questions. During councilmember comments, I'm going to address the issue of the motors. That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 7, the consent calendar, and there are four resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent item 8, resolution number 2023-28, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley approving the city of Simi Valley Zero Emissions Bus ZEB rollout plan and authorizing the city manager to submit the ZEB rollout plan to the California Air Resources Board in accordance with the innovative clean transit regulations. Consent item 9, resolution number 2023-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley establishing an appropriations limit for fiscal year 2023-24. Consent item 10, resolution number 2023-30, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley acting in its capacity as a legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2004-1 of the city of Simi Valley Town Center Project, authorizing the levy of a special tax for fiscal year 2023-2024. And consent item 11, resolution number 2023-31, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley approving an updated citywide publicly available pay schedule effective on May 8, 2023 in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5.
Does anyone have any consent items you want to pull?
Mayor, I would request that we pull items 6 and 8.
Six. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the rest of the consent calendar, except for items 6 and 8.
Second. Roll call, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
Why don't you start the conversation about item 6?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Item 6 is the awarding of the contract for the construction of fiscal year 2023 major street rehabilitation program. Basically, this is referenced by Mr. Lapper and others on the dais. This is the repaving of Alamo between Sequoia and Lemon Drive, and, I mean, basically, the bid process looks correct. It was within $2,000 of the projected bid, so all of that looks good, and is supposed to start the end of 2023. But my question, I guess, is one of understanding how the roads were selected. I drive Alamo all the time. I'm not, and so that particular piece, I realize, is the only section that hasn't been slurried. So I gather the rest of it is, but as I drive the road, maybe I just need a little education of how we determine what is the most needy, because as I drive it, to be honest, I would probably pave Galena to Sequoia, given what I drive, or maybe, anyway. So I'm just trying to understand, how long ago were these roads rated, and is that updated recently? Is that?
Sure, but so we, we're going through the, so the roads are rated.
Sure.
All roads in the community are rated through the PCI Pavement Condition Index, and we're hitting the worst ones now as we go through, and that's how we're working through the order. Zero is the worst road, 100 is the best road. This particular section of Alamo was not a candidate for crack sealing because of the condition of the road and the base that is failing below it, that if it wasn't redone now, it would be, it would continue to get more expensive to do this one section of Alamo because of the condition of the street.
And how long does the crack sealing add to the length of a road's life? Because what we're going to have now is crack sealant, and then we're going to have a stretch of beauty, and then crack sealing again for, I mean, is that?
Yeah, so you will, as we continue to work our way through the roads in the community, you're going to see hopscotching going on. The crack sealing adds years to the life of a road. The crack sealing, for instance, Tapo Canyon is the most noticeable one, it's right out here. We've probably added four to five years to the life of that road easily through just doing the crack sealing, keeping the water out, so it doesn't deteriorate the base and the pavement above it. So that's, that's, that's why we're doing the crack sealing and when we do slurry sealing at the same time. This section was not a candidate for, and that's why you see on each side, both sides have been, have been crack sealed. A lot of it goes back to the history of the road because in the, there was a time when Alamo, both sides were open, and then it was closed. The north side of it was closed up until the early 90s because it hadn't been finished yet all the way through, and it didn't go all the way throughout to Sycamore. So it actually got a little bit more wear as time went on.
On the south side. So, and this maybe may speak to Mr. Lapper's question. Basically, I know we're looking, we're going to be talking on a budget, maybe that's where we should discuss it, but is it safe to say that that is the general expense to recover a major road is about $600,000 per two-tenths of a mile?
It's a, it's a bid. I mean, it's a bid that a contractor submits. We, we do specifications on, for every time we go out to bid on a road, we're indicating the condition of the road, the base of the road as we know it, the amount of asphalt that, the rubberized asphalt that needs to be done, all the, how many manholes are on it, and water holes that need to be raised and covered. It really depends on, every road is going to be different. There isn't a standard. We, we can do an estimate based upon a foot, a footage, a linear foot of it, but it all depends on what the, what the bids are going to come in at. You'll have two contracts coming for you next meeting. Los Angeles Avenue, I believe, from Sequoia to Sycamore, I think, is coming next meeting. And, Roy, do you remember the other one? There's two that are coming.
Westbound Cochran Street.
That's right. So westbound Cochran, Galena, and Sycamore is coming. So those are coming, those are going to come at the next meeting on the 12th for award of a contract. So it, but, you know, it's, we got, we're getting good bids, and we're getting good responses from contractors.
And more beyond that, correct? And more beyond that, right?
Yes. Oh, much more beyond that.
Well, and I think residents should probably know too, because one, I don't think everyone understands that when they see all the cracks slurried, that that's actually a good thing. That that means roads are being repaired and being prolonged. I think sometimes that is, the appearance is that maybe that, there's, it's problematic there.
Absolutely. Yes. And if you subscribe to City Focus, we're having a section in our newsletter that goes out to talk about why we're doing these crazy lines on the street, which are, which are the crack ceiling.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions for six. Do you want me to go with eight?
Any other discussion on six? Okay. Why don't you go ahead and start the conversation on eight?
So eight basically deals with our long range planning of zero emission bus rollout. And it's, it's, it's actually quite sizable and it's quite a big plan, I mean, as far as what's being proposed. My question is, basically, if I understand reading the plan, we're going to phase out all of our natural gas run buses. And then over time, they'll all become electric, in essence. That's a short summary. My recollection is though, however, that we just recently updated our CNG facility, that we made improvements to it to make it last longer, to be more productive. Isn't that accurate? Didn't we just?
We did. We did some upgrades to the pumping and to the system itself in order to get better production out of it.
We will continue to use CNG buses for a considerable amount of time. We're, we're starting by replacing, what, three of the routes?
Yeah.
I understand. This is, this is phased in over time, and it is entire electrification by 2040, I believe, is what the plan is. And so I guess my question, and this is maybe one of education too for all of us. This is that we can get to zero emission, basically. Is there a way that CNG can get to that point of near zero emission or zero emission?
We have not seen the technology for it. And I don't believe, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong. This is a federal mandate that requires electrification. We couldn't stay on CNG even if we wanted to.
Does the federal mandate require electrification or does it require zero emission?
It requires zero emission. Right now, that's the only, other than hydrogen.
Well, that's what I was going to say. So have we looked at hydrogen as well as a possibility?
Now, why don't you come on down? So, so zero emission, so there's two types of technology, the electric and then hydrogen. The problem with hydrogen, the little that I do know, it's very expensive. The infrastructure is probably the biggest part of it. And then you have to decide whether or not, and because it's so expensive, some agencies are looking to have it trucked in, the hydrogen. So it's not as advanced in many agencies' opinion that that's the route to go. It's a lot cheaper to go electric is where most agencies are going. It's, hydrogen will last longer as far as bus range. But that's if you have like long range routes like Oxnard, for example, they're going hydrogen. They're probably, I think, the only one in Ventura County that's going hydrogen. That's because they have longer range routes that are probably 250 miles, 300 miles a day, whereas ours average about 180, 200 miles per day. So there's a lot of variables, but that's probably the biggest reason why. And then the vehicles are a lot more electric. It's probably 1.2 million roughly. And hydrogen is probably one and a half to 1.7 million per bus.
So it's my understanding that initially what we're going to do is get buses to service the three shorter routes. Because that's really, all that's really feasible with electric buses at this point.
That's correct. Right. As the technology gets better, then we'll put them on the longer range routes. But right now, as we're getting, our first six will be on the shorter routes. So we're hoping to get the full range out of us throughout the day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to, I'm going to share some of my knowledge on the hydrogen thing. VCTC is going to hydrogen buses because electrification is not valid. It's not a valid technology for buses. And it's going to, we're hopefully not going to be in that boat, but we might find out sadly. Just the way other cities have gone when they bought these buses, they don't work very long. Second, the cool thing about hydrogen, and you have to look at this in the future, is the gas company has promised, and they said they have the technology to do it. They can put hydrogen in the same lines as natural gas and separate it out at the end. So that's, we already have that infrastructure in place. I'm looking at this, with this purchase here, I really don't like this purchase here. I was hoping we could just say we're going to buy these buses, like VCTC did, when the technology is viable. This is like a stopgap measure. Puts us into good graces of the people demanding this happen for whatever reason they're demanding it happen. Our future is going to be hydrogen. Otherwise, we're not going to have buses, at least not buses that can run over an hour a day. So that's the future. And then California has to look at that too, because that's, Oxnard's running some electric buses right now. There's a couple of other places that have them. I can't remember the, oh, I got that was a great story about the failure. I can't remember who that was right now. But, I was here, I was in California. We're the first ones to do this, idiocy. But the electric buses, this is just my opinion. I think that's kind of the thoughts that you guys had too, is these are stopgap buses to make sure that we have this program in place. So when hydrogen does become a viable source, that'll be what we go to.
Right. And we had to make a decision for our next purchase in two years. And so like Mayor Protem said, you know, and it's not to say we can transition into hydrogen in our next phase of purchases. There are some agencies that are going 50% hydrogen, 50% electric to see what is the better solution. But yeah, hydrogen has a better range. It's just costly.
And if I understood the report, we're actually starting with electric vans, not electric buses specifically.
Community service routes, smaller vans, right.
Got it. I also had questions in the report about the installing the charging stations. As I read the report, I understand that we have the option of having SCE do the whole thing. Or we have the option of having it bring it up to our property and then we install, which would allow us to hook into our own solar system. But we'd require more work, might be more expensive. My question is, who gets to make that decision? When is that decision made? And is that?
I'll let you take that one.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to weigh in on that decision.
Okay.
And right now, there's a lot of money flowing out of the federal government. And the state will be pushing out money too in order to support the EV infrastructure, not only for the private resident, private citizen as well as the public. In fact, we're preparing a grant proposal right now for an EV grant. But there's, we've, we've got it in the budget for, I forget what year, I think next year expenditure to start looking at the facility in order to power these buses. And that's where we'll be able to make that decision. And there are other entities as well that we could, we could contract with, not just, SCE doesn't have the, the monopoly on these.
So if we approve this plan tonight, it's still quite malleable? And this really is just to satisfy the state's requirement right now?
It's a living document.
Very clear.
Right. Yeah, it's more of a guidance. Yeah. An SCE ready program is what it's called, so you can go. There's pros and cons, and that's the decision we have to make. Because if you let them do the whole thing, I think it's about a 10-year commitment that you have to have with them, then you can't change anything without their permission. Whereas if you just go to the fence, then you have your internal infrastructure that you could change at your own will. But this plan here does not, will not dictate whether we can go either way, one way or another.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve consent items six and eight.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8A. Second reading of ordinance number 1349 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to update standards for accessory dwelling units in response to recent state law changes and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Equality Act. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1349, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Simi Valley for city-initiated municipal code amendment Z-S-2023-0003 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to update standards for accessory dwelling units in response to recent state law changes and determining that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Equality Act.
May I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I move to recommend that ordinance number 1349 be adopted.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The next item on the agenda is 9A. Review and approval of fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Approval of the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023-24 to fiscal year 2027-28. Approval of fiscal year 2023-24 transit budget and program of projects and adoption of resolutions. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Resolution number 2023-32. A resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley authorizing the filing of applications with the Federal Transit Administration and operating administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53 and for any Title 23 United States Code and any other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration. Resolution number 2023-33. A resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley amending resolution number 2023-13 to retitle the management-designated classification of Deputy Administrative Services Director Support Services to Deputy Administrative Services Director Budget and Purchasing. And joint resolution number 2023-34/WWD-295/SA-12/PL-33. A joint resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, successor agency to the City of Simi Valley Community Development Agency and Board of Trustees for the Simi Valley Library approving the fiscal year 2023-24 annual budget and the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023-24 to fiscal year 2027-28. And Administrative Services Director Carolyn Johnson and Deputy Administrative Services Director Johanna Madrano are here to present this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Thomas and members of city council. I'm Carolyn Johnson, Administrative Services Director. And with me today is Johanna Madrano, Deputy Administrative Services Director, Budgeting and Purchasing. So the item before you this evening for your consideration is to approve the Simi Valley Transit Fiscal Year 23-24 Program of Projects. I'm just going to go briefly because Lucy went through it all. Review and modify is appropriate the fiscal year 23-24 proposed budget and preliminary five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 23-24 to 27-28. Incorporating the previously adopted budgets for the Cultural Arts Center and the Council on Aging, which were on the consent agenda item this evening. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the filing of the grant applications with the FTA. And adopt a resolution to retitle the Deputy Administrative Services Director Support Services to Deputy Administrative Services Director Budget and Purchasing. And also adopt the fiscal year 23-24 annual budget and the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 23-24 to 27-28. So this evening, we'll briefly distinguish between the city's budget and the annual comprehensive financial report for clarity. Talk about the state of the city's general fund, including fiscal policies. Discuss the general fund's revenues and expenditures for last fiscal year, which was fiscal year 21-22. And then go into a forecast of how the general fund is expected to end this current fiscal year, which is 22-23. Discuss the state of the economy and the impacts at the federal, state, and local level. Review the proposed annual budget for next year, which is fiscal year 23-24. Highlight recommended projects for the city's capital improvement program. Review proposed budgets in the city's enterprise funds. And then take a look at a few examples of what city staff has accomplished in the current fiscal year. So the city has two main financial documents that are produced and approved by the city council every year. The budget document is presented to city council every June and is effective from July 1st through June 30th. It's a plan for the next fiscal year, and it's based on estimated revenues and expenditures. The annual comprehensive financial report is also approved by city council each year after the citywide financial audit is complete. The fiscal year 21-22 financial report is scheduled to be presented to city council for approval at the next meeting on June 12th. This document contains the financial records of the prior fiscal year. This document is prepared and audited for conformity with general accepted accounting principles. Today, we are focusing on the budget document. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. Funds are unrestricted and generated from taxes such as property tax, sales tax, also from service charges, as well as other general revenues such as building permits and plan check fees. The general fund provides for traditional government services such as police services, planning, code enforcement, senior services, public works, and city administration. The city's financial policies state that the city will maintain a prudent general fund reserve balance for emergencies. And city council has established that at 17% of general fund budgeted expenditures. As of the end of the last fiscal year, the city had an unrestricted general fund balance of over 69% of general fund operating expenses. The financial policies also state that the city will adopt and maintain a structurally balanced budget. What that means is that ongoing operating revenues meet or exceed ongoing operating expenditures. And any year-end remaining unassigned funds will be available for consideration by council for one-time uses. Looking closer at that last statement, any year-end remaining unassigned funds will be available for consideration by council for one-time uses. At the April 25, 2022 meeting, city council adopted a fund balance policy to preserve a healthy and appropriate general fund balance while also using surplus funds to address one-time investments into the community. The policy states that year-end surplus general fund dollars can be reassigned into three funds. One fund is the infrastructure fund. That's for one-time capital needs. That would be things such as streets, traffic signal equipment, facilities, and buildings. Also, the retirement fund. Dollars put into this fund can potentially be put into 115 trust account to be used as a rainy day fund for CalPERS payments or to make additional discretionary payments to reduce the city's unfunded liability or to make a payment to reduce the city's OPEB liability. And then there's also the contingency fund. That's for one-time expenditure needs that are urgent and unanticipated. So decisions on exactly how to best spend that money would be brought back to council to consider at a later time. Initially during the budget process, the money would simply be put into these separate funds so that it would be available for future consideration. So last fiscal year, fiscal year 21-22, started with a general fund balance of $48.5 million. After all revenues and expenses of the year were accounted for, the city had a year-end surplus of $10.3 million. This brought the general fund balance to $58.9 million. So keeping in mind the year-end surplus policy and the $10.3 million surplus at the end of fiscal year 21-22, the fiscal year 23-24 budget includes transferring the amount of the surplus into the three predetermined funds as defined by the fund balance policy for future city council consideration. So there's 4.5 million transferring into the infrastructure fund, 4.5 million into the retiree fund, and 1.2 into the contingency fund. So for a moment, let's look at the current economic outlook. So inflation has been slowly decreasing with the CPI at 3.8% for April 2023, in contrast to 7.9% for April of last year, 2022. Housing sales slowed in Simi Valley during 2022. It's likely a median price increase of over 10%, and high borrowing rates were behind the slowing trend. Sales tax revenue growth is expected to slow during 2023 and 2024. The influx of online sales magnified by the pandemic is a contributor that we contribute, that we continue to monitor. The Fed enacted another increase in interest rates in May, the 10th increase since March of 2022. It is currently unknown if there will be another rate increase next week. California officially ended the state emergency declaration at the end of February. and the US government ended the declaration on May 11th. And investors are mixed on the market outlook, but mostly optimistic. Some concerns of recession and market volatility, however, do remain. Okay, so before we get far into the fiscal year 23-24 proposed budget, let's look at this current fiscal year, which will end June 30th. We are again seeing a combination of increased revenues and decreased expenditures. Therefore, staff anticipates to end the year, once again with an operating year-end surplus of $4.75 million. Additionally, two years ago, the fiscal year ended with an $8 million surplus. Those surplus funds were approved by the City Council to be used during this current fiscal year for major street projects, the city's radio communication equipment replacement project, a flood hazardous assessment study, and for hazardous tree removal. $3.2 million of the surplus dollars were allocated to make a payment to pay down the city's unfunded liability with CalPERS. Again, the surplus is due to conservative revenue budgeting. The fiscal year 22-23 budget was being developed as the pandemic was beginning to wind down and the economy was getting back to normal. The real estate market was beginning to slow down after a couple of years of quick rising costs, and people began to travel and enjoy entertainment outside of the home again. Because of that, the departments continued to be careful with their expenditures, and positions stayed vacant for longer than typical. Also, highly active consumer spending has driven our sales tax revenue up, and high interest rates began to impact the flow of new development projects, creating an unexpected rush for permits and services, such as encroachment permits and inspection services. This brings in higher-than-anticipated revenues. These large year-end surpluses are not expected to continue into future years and are considered one-time dollars. The city is using the one-time surplus to evaluate the infrastructure and other budgetary needs of the city. The fiscal year 2023-24 budget was created with the intention of funding long-term deficiencies with one-time revenue surpluses that the city has enjoyed. With that in mind, the proposed budget also contains $16.5 million for streets and roads, with $3.8 million of that coming from the general fund, $3.1 coming from the city's portion of the Senate Bill 1, state gas tax revenue, and $7.6 million from county, state, and federal funding. Some street improvements to highlight in the budget are $2.5 million in major streets, $4.4 million in minor streets, $4.5 for the Sequoia Avenue Railroad Crossing, $200,000 for pothole repairs, $250,000 for traffic signal upgrades, $250,000 for slurry seal and crack seal, $100,000 to replace deteriorated street signage throughout the city, $200,000 to repair and replace curb, gutter, and sidewalks, and $150,000 for street tree removals. The city is also investing its employees. In recognition of the employees' commitment and dedication to the city, the City Council approved a revised agreement with a compensation increase of 6% effective immediately and a 4% increase in April of fiscal year 2024-25. In December of 2019, the City Council also established a reserve fund balance for both the sanitation and water funds. The budget document indicates the reserve funds with amounts based on each funding target, funding level, set by the council for operating and CIP expenses. As part of the proposed budget, there is a 3% increase to the general fund to offset the costs for materials and supplies. Looking at the general fund proposed budget for next year, we are expecting an $87.8 million in revenue, which is $2.2 million more than what we are estimating for the current fiscal year. The increase is mostly in the categories of taxes and franchises, specifically those in property tax and sales tax. We are expecting the revenues to continue to increase for another year, however, at a more moderate pace, and then level off. The real estate market has cooled somewhat after a couple of years of quick rising home prices. On the expenditure side for fiscal year 23-24, we are budgeting $87.7 million, which is $3 million more than the adopted budget for this current fiscal year. Most of the increase in the categories of personnel, which includes the cost of living adjustment approved by the City Council, as I mentioned earlier. Also, there is an increase in services category due to the increase in costs for insurance. Expenditures are always budgeted higher than how they actually are expended at the end of the year. That is why we are comparing the fiscal year 23-24 budget numbers to the past adopted budgets and not the actual expenditure numbers. Actual expenditure numbers come in quite a bit lower than the budget, and comparing the budget numbers to actuals would not be a meaningful comparison. The following chart shows the department's portions of the general fund. Here, you can see that the Police Department does make up 41.1% of the general fund, with Public Works Department coming in second at 21% of the general fund. If we take a look at the two largest department budgets by all city funds, rather than by only looking at it for the general fund, you can see that the Public Works is actually 42%, excuse me, 52% of the entire city budget, with the Police Department at only 14.9%. All other departments combined at the remaining 33.1%. Public Works operates out of the Transit, Sanitation, and Water Works funds. The overall administration of their department is funded through the general fund. Looking at the general fund forecast, to the left, you can see the $10.3 million surplus from fiscal year 21-22, and the estimated surplus at the end of the current fiscal year. You can also see that, moving forward, the city does not expect to continue to enjoy such large year-end surpluses. The city's future budget projections anticipate a more moderate growth path, closer to 2% to 3%. As we return to moderate increases, the proposed fiscal year 23-24 budget was developed with the understanding that the greater-than-normal revenues overseen in the last couple of years is temporary, and therefore, funds were not being committed to long-term obligations. Due to the many years of well-managed budgetary decisions, the city continues to experience revenue growth at a slightly faster rate than our expenditures. The city is in a strong financial position and will allow the City Council to make strategic decisions for the foreseeable future. A softening of the revenue is on the horizon. As Carolyn mentioned earlier, the Federal Reserve initiated a series of interest rates intended to slow the economy and address inflation. Federal COVID-related stimulus funds that flowed to consumers have ended, and labor and supply chain issues remain, although at a lesser degree. Additionally, the Simi Valley housing market experienced a decrease in the median house price. With an eye on these issues, as well as other short-term impacts, staff continues to monitor the national, state, and regional economies. Moving on to our capital improvement program, there's a total of 194 projects in our five-year capital improvement plan, with 66 of those projects requesting funding in fiscal year 23-24. The proposed funding are for 66 projects, is a total of $31.5 million, with $4.09 million coming from the general fund. Once again, there's $16.5 million for streets and roads, and another $5.7 for the waterworks projects. Over the next five years, the anticipated capital project need will be $142 million. Next, we have our enterprise funds. For our transit, the proposed budget for fiscal year 23-24 is requesting $12.88 million, of which $2.5 million is allocated for capital projects. Projects requesting funding for the next fiscal year include our bus stop improvements, safety and security technology equipment for our buses, two electric transit vehicles and the electric infrastructure, overhaul of an HVAC system servicing the transit maintenance building, and replacement of two low-emission buses. For sanitation, the proposed budget for fiscal year 23-24 is requesting a total of $34 million for all three combined funds, including $3.2 million for capital projects. Projects requesting funding for next fiscal year include the sewer line inspection and cleaning projects, replacement of the HVAC system at various buildings at the plant, rehabilitation of various building roofs at our plant, replacement of manual flow control gates at the East BNR tanks, replace four Gert pumps at the plant, repair various manholes, as well as sewer line repairs at both the eastern and western points of our city. For the enterprise fund, we are proposing a budget of $52 million for all three combined funds, with $5.7 million of that coming for capital projects. Projects requesting a next fiscal year include a pump station, construction and rehabilitation project, water line replacements, water tank repair inspections and cleaning, and emergency generators at pump stations and tank sites. We'd like to continue with highlighting some of the accomplishments that we have achieved since our last adoption of our budget, starting with our city administration. We have partnered with the Economic Development Collaborative and launched the Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund, which provides low-interest loans ranging from $10,000 to $100,000 for businesses who are unable to secure our traditional loan. Partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and hosted three job fairs to help support our local businesses. We've also launched the city's COVID-19 Grant, Community Recovery Grant Program, streamlined citywide recruitment processes to reduce hiring time and attract candidates to public service, which resulted in initiating 63 recruitments and filled vacant positions and processed over 2,000 employment applications. We also distributed over $40,000 in rental subsidy to local nonprofit and arts organizations through the Cultural Arts Center Performing Arts Recovery Grant and expanded that grant through 2023. For the city attorney's office, they assisted the city clerk's office in processing 275 public records requests, some involving significant records review or complexity of private issues, filed segregation cases on the city's behalf to recover property damage caused by third parties, assisted in the process of 43 subpoenas served on the city, and investigated and made recommendations on 25 new claims and managed the administration in closing of over 30 pending claims. For our Administrative Services Department, we established a general fund fund balance policy that provided, for the first time ever, an additional payment towards our city's CalPERS unfunded liability, put additional funding towards street maintenance, and is partially funding the citywide radio system infrastructure replacement. We were also awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting in the GFOA for the 42nd consecutive year for our ACFIR in fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021. We were awarded the Certificate of Excellence for both the operating and capital fiscal year 22-23 budget documents from CSFMO for the 33rd consecutive year. We achieved the goal of 13.7% of utility billing consumers going green by subscribing to our Water Works District paperless billing option and continue to encourage our customers to utilize paperless electronic statements. We also successfully transitioned the city's internal procurement process to electronically review and manage proposals and bid documents, developed a program identifying Water Works District Number 8 utility customers with continuous water loss, and notified over 1,900 customers of potential issues in effort to assist and reduce high-water builds and avoiding ongoing water loss. For the Environmental Services Department, they completed final planning inspections for a 63,800-square-foot industrial building, 149,000-square-foot self-storage and industrial complex, and two Starbucks drive-through coffee shops. They readopted the city's housing element of the general plan and submitted it to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for final certification, performed 20,000 building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspections, and provided next-day service to permit customers, and completed two recruitments to fill 32 positions on the Neighborhood Council Executive Boards and oriented volunteer advisory board members on city operations, governmental structure, effective public engagement, and meeting facilitation. The Public Works Department completed the pavement rehabilitation of five city major streets and 75 residential streets, and upgraded over 134 curb ramps to meet with the ADA requirements. They also completed concrete repairs of sidewalks and curbs and gutters at over 115 locations throughout the city and upgraded nine city intersections with traffic signal video detection cameras. The design submitted and received tentative approval for the construction retrofit of three different water conservation projects within the city's landscape zones. That included portions of L.A. Avenue, Arringer Road, Galena Avenue, and at the Civic Center. They amended and reinstated the franchise agreement with waste management, which included many new service improvements, completed over 3,000 work orders consisting of preventative maintenance and repairs for 371 city-owned vehicles and equipment, and purchased and installed 24 connector pipe screen units to reduce the trash into the Arroyo Simi. And the Police Department. During the calendar year 2022, crime was reduced by 6.14% per the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting Standards. They maintained emergency response time of less than five minutes, implemented the ECHA-CAT program, and formed community partnerships aimed at thwarting catalytic converter thefts, conducted several high-priority investigations, including internet crimes against children, investigations, and arrests, and processed a memorandum of understanding for a full-time Ventura County behavioral health employee to work with our vulnerable population detective in order to better address the needs of the city's vulnerable population. So in review, overall, so the city continues to experience a strong financial position overall, with a healthy general fund balance. The fiscal year 23-24 proposed budget is strategically developed to address long-term funding deficiencies with one-time dollars. And the proposed fiscal year 23-24 budget was developed with the understanding that revenue growth has moderated compared to the last two years, and therefore, funds are not being committed to new long-term obligations. And that is the extent of our presentation. There are members here from the different departments to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I'd like to go first. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Madrano, fantastic report. This is my first budget cycle from the dais being elected, and these reports, the budget preparation, was so easy even I could understand it. And looking at through the different departments and how they were successful and what projects were completed throughout the years. I thank you for assembling it all, presenting it clearly, and I also wanted to thank all the staff that I have called for questions prior to this. Your openness and willingness to be able to make sure that we are clear up here is outstanding. So I actually have no questions. I just wanted to compliment you.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask, also want to commend you on your report. Great report. I mean, we got two huge books and a 32-page staff report. That's awesome. You guys did a great job, as usual. And the accomplishments of our city, everybody in our city, just thank you for doing it. Appreciate the report.
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto, appreciate the report, all information. I do have some questions. I know, Carolyn, we spoke earlier on the phone with some questions too, and I may get there. But just a couple of questions to start. I know you referenced the first that we've actually, for the first time, made an additional CalPERS payment, which helped reduce our unfunded liability. On page 26 of the budget, it has kind of a five-year projection of where we are. Currently, we have unfunded pension liabilities of about 79, 78%, but I know this is based on, there's a delayed process, based on a few years. Anyway, I guess my question is, as I looked at the estimated city CalPERS payments, and I think I asked our city manager about this, I was hopeful that this meant we had peaked in our obligation, but I understand that that is not the case. Can you maybe project where we are headed with those unfunded liabilities beyond these five years? Or is that a reasonable thing to even make that request?
Well, we know at the end of fiscal year '22 that CalPERS had a loss.
Right.
We don't have the actual valuation from that yet. We will receive that, I think, in August or September of this year.
Okay.
So we'll see an adjustment based on that. But we don't have those numbers yet. So that, you know, it changes every year. I don't know how this year is going to end, how they're going to be as of June.
Fair enough.
We don't know how that's going to affect it yet.
Okay. And originally, too, we, I think, we, our obligations are going to peak maybe 2030. Is that what's projected? Or do we know when we might be peaking our CalPERS payments? Is that?
Well, when we make our, if we make any more payments to our unfunded liability, that will help to reduce that.
That's true.
So that gets factored in, too.
That makes sense. Absolutely. Okay. So, and I appreciate that. I want you to, I appreciate the I want you to, I appreciate the conservative approach that you've taken with this, and I, as I reviewed that, I even reviewed with some accounting friends just to look through, and I want you to know that they spoke highly. A couple of my questions, they put me at ease, so I just want you to know that that was reassuring to me as well, when you take it to other people, experts, to look at it. One of the questions, which I think you answered for me earlier today, but I would just like to quickly be sure that it's, that it's clear, is with regards to the expenses broken down by department, page 11, and it talks about each of the departments and expenses. At first, I was concerned that the non-departmental expenses seemed to have blossomed, but I understand that that is because of the way we are changing, capturing expenses of the entire, that are used by multiple departments. Can you maybe speak to that, to the reason for that 39% change?
Well, one of the things that is, gets put into non-departmental is our offset. So we budget 100% for all of our positions, but we know that we're not going to fill them all, so we do put an offset, a negative number in there, and we put that in non-departmental, and that offset is a little bit lower for next year, so that's, that's part of it right there.
Okay.
Don't know what else is in there.
If I may, if I can jump in.
Please.
There were, we did make a change that accounted for most of this increase between how we funded the Fund 803 on page 203, the Liability Insurance Fund, and the Workers' Comp Fund on page 205. It was my goal to increase the ending balance in the general liability, the liability fund higher than it was in prior years, whereas the Workers' Comp Fund was sufficiently funded. So we reduced the general fund and other department contributions to the Workers' Comp Fund and moved them toward the Liability Insurance Fund in order to build up that fund balance. That accounted for most of the large increase that you'd seen, you're seeing in the non-departmental.
Okay. Thank you for helping understand that. Question arose with your lovely presentation. Just a couple of things. You mentioned the housing element has been submitted to the state. Since this has been published, it has now received final certification, correct?
That's correct. It has been approved.
Which is, speaks to hard work on the behalf of the city.
And if I may, just a side note, because that's now approved, now we're able to launch the Housing Assistance Program that has not been able to launch until the housing element was approved. So that's going to start paving the way for that.
Excellent. Excellent. And then the other question I had that arose in your presentation, the, you mentioned in the Police Department, the full-time Behavioral Health Employee, the MOU with the county as far as funding the full-time Behavioral Health Employee has been received or negotiated. Is that in place, however? That's.
It is not in place, but we are, we are so close to, right now, it's between the legal side of the city of Simi Valley and the legal side of the county of Ventura.
So it's David's fault? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're making sure it's legally sufficient.
Okay.
But we are, we are very close to finalizing that, but it has taken, we really thought, I mean, these, this document was developed months ago.
Of course.
We really thought we'd be there by that time.
But it is close. And is happening.
We are, it is happening.
Which I look forward to, very. I think that's questions for right now, let you go to Councilmember Kavanaugh, then maybe I'll come back.
Well, then, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I won't take very long. Basically, I just wanted to say, great job, Caroline. I think this is your first time by yourself, the entire budget, or is it your second?
Well, I had Johanna.
Okay. Okay, as the head, as the head, the lead, let me put that. So congratulations. You and your team always do a great job. This, your presentation was wonderful. I went through and I kind of highlighted some of the things that I thought were great, but you actually brought them up here even better. Our prudent reserve is three times what it's required to be, and, I mean, just that alone says how financially stable we are as a city, which in this day and age is a good thing. And the surplus allowing, which we most likely will, is allowing those extra payments to be made on the pension liabilities. That's a fantastic thing. You notice nobody's bringing that up anymore. That used to be the number-one thing we would hear about week after week in the, from the community, and so now that we're able to, we've got a handle on it. So I think that's a great thing. And our streets, the dollar amounts that we're putting into our streets, that is the most visible thing that the average community member sees. Well, that and the weeds. So between, and we'll get on Public Works. Where's Ron? No, I'm just kidding. They do a great job. Public Works does an awesome job. But I think those are the two things that we have control over right now, and we're able to finally get back to the streets, and that's making a big difference. And I didn't understand the crack filling either. So that was kind of good. I'm like, why is all this stuff on L.A. Avenue all of a sudden? So, okay, I'll think of it as a good thing now instead of a bad thing. And then one of the things I am the most happy for is I am the Chair of the EDC, the Economic Development Collaborative, this year. So us being able to give small businesses loans, small businesses here in Simi Valley, loans that, for businesses that don't qualify at a bank, is an awesome thing. So please tell every business, I'm constantly trying to promote the EDC, every business in town, if you need any help, it's all free. The loan isn't free, but all the other help is very free, is very much free. And I think that's a great thing, and what, $10,000 to $100,000 in business loans, those can really make or break a company, a business here in town, and those are for our small locals, and that's who supports our community. So we really want to encourage those. And then a few other things you just highlighted, you did a great job in your presentation, and re-adopting the housing, the city's housing element. I knew that was, that was really a big step for us. I want to say congratulations to all of you to make, you're making our job look easy and making us look good with a balanced budget every year. So thank you, Caroline, and all your team, everybody involved. So thank you.
And they do, really do a good job. This is my first time dealing with the city budget. I'm used to big budgets, but nothing as complicated as this. This is the small document that we were working from, and I went through this page by page all the way through. I don't want you to think that I didn't have any questions. I actually have some good news. I had two pages full of questions, but since it was my first time through the budget process, I met with staff for a nice, long meeting and had an opportunity to ask each and every one of those questions, and they had the right answers to each and everyone. So I was really impressed, and, you know, as complicated as this is, I feel like I have a good understanding of the whole thing right now, and I feel really good about it. Did you want to return to something?
I have one, just one quick question, just this is more for education for everyone, because there's, and I appreciate you, you spoke about road, major and minor road, and the carryover that's gone forward and what we've been added to it. If a constituent wanted to know where the list is of what is being proposed for this coming '23, '24 budget fiscal cycle, where do they turn to know whether or not their road is being, is it contained in this document? Or do they, what's the best and fastest way for them to find that out?
Well, on page 265, there is a list of the streets, projects, and what each project intends to do.
Now, that'll have for the major streets on page 265. Minor streets, we, we usually don't firm up that list until spring of the following year. And we just, if the council may recall, you just let contracts for our minor streets two, three meetings ago. So, but that's, again, going through the PCI list, but if a resident wants to call or shoot us an email, we can at least tell them where the, where their street is on the PCI list, and that'll give an idea of how closely it's getting closer on the minor streets. Minor streets are just as important where the residents are driving on those every single day as much as on the arterial streets. So we need a continued investment in those as well.
Thank you. So I just want to be sure people knew where to find that, find that information. And again, thank you for the time and effort that has gone into this, and I'm encouraged that we're in a good, strong position and that you've been wise in your, in what, how you've, your projections and been reasonable, and that's, that's critical, because obviously a budget is, it's not a document that is, that you have a surety of the future, but it is only as good as your projections or your, what's the word I'm looking for? What it's based upon, the, what is it?
How the economy is going.
Well, how the economy is going. There's, no, and the team, no, but assumptions, I'm sorry, that's the word I'm looking for. Excuse me. Don't get a hold, it happens. But it's only as good as the assumptions you use and the, and how you develop it, and so I, I commend you for your care that you took in this project. Thank you very much.
May I make a motion?
Please do.
I move to approve the Simi Valley Transit Fiscal Year 2023-24 Program of Projects to be forwarded to the Ventura County Transportation Commission, and I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-30-32, authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the filing of grant applications with the FTA, and I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-33 to retitle the Management Designated Classification of Deputy Administrative Services Director, Support Services to Deputy Administrative Services Director Budget and Purchasing, and I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-34/WWD-295/SA-12/PL-33, say that again, approving the fiscal year 2023-24 annual budget and the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2023-24 to fiscal year 2027-28, incorporating the previously adopted budgets for the Cultural Arts Center and the Council on Aging.
Second.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just take one moment, you see a lot of staff members in the audience. This is just a few of the staff members that have been involved in putting together the budget, putting in long hours, working very hard. They understand your needs and your priorities, and looking at the priorities of the council, fiscal strength, economic development, housing, police, public safety, they understand that, and they put together a budget that will, I believe, make you very proud and make me very proud. You have, you have tremendous staff working for you, and Johanna and Carolyn have led the charge with Linda Swan from our office, and all the other departments have done an amazing job pulling this together, and Cynthia Roscoe, and I couldn't be prouder, and they've done an amazing job pulling this budget together.
Thank you.
Brian, how much was budgeted for overtime for all these?
Their management, no overtime.
At least we didn't keep them too late.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Always come so fast. All right. I'm not sure if I mentioned this in the last council report, that on Monday, May 15th, where we had a council meeting, I attended a Connect SoCal workshop out in Camarillo on, it's an outreach that SCAG has in order to make sure that their projects that they're projecting out into the future are meeting the needs, both in transportation and housing. Tuesday, May 16th, the mayor and I got an overview training of the Emergency Operations Center, and it was fun because we kept saying, well, what if this happens? And there was a plan. But what if that happens? There's also a plan. So great job with the staff there, being, being prepared for anything, and I did check on the coffee supply, and it's there, so. Let's see, on Wednesday, the 17th, I attended the Simi Valley PTA, PTSA Council Honorary Service Awards Dinner. Fabulous educators and administrators that, that do so much in our school system, and we often confuse our frustration of school policy with those that teach, and these are an amazing group of people, and so proud of them. On Thursday, May 18th, I celebrated my 27th year anniversary with my wife, Kim. On Friday, May 19th, I attended the Simi Valley Education Foundation Teacher of the Month at Simi Valley High School. On Monday, the 22nd, I, this is actually a great, this is a moment where I got to really fully understand the budget and get a ton of my questions asked, and met with city manager to review the budget one-on-two, where we got to, the mayor and I got to ask several questions because it was our first time going through, so thank you so much for that orientation and how to look at, read, and absorb that information. That afternoon and evening, we did the youth council returning member interviews with Councilwoman Kavanaugh, and that was probably the, one of the tougher decisions that I've had to go through as council, to pick the nine, nine returning, and that was, that was very difficult decision-making. Thursday through Thursday, a week, I attended the Rotary International Convention in Melbourne, Australia, and it's great to be around 12,000 like-minded people doing good in the world and coming back. When I came back, I landed at 6:00 a.m. and promptly drove downtown for the SCAG Committee Meeting. I'm on the Community Housing and Economic Development Committee, and then the general meeting, and then walked down the street to attend the Clean Power Alliance Meeting. I will, I'll be sharing reports with council on those, so then there's no decisions to be made, but I think there's some interesting updates. On Friday, I attended Leadership Simi Valley Class of 2023 Graduation Celebration, and what a fantastic program, what a fantastic group of people. They put their heart and soul into it, and the chamber puts their heart and soul into putting that on. What a great service to the city. And then, today, the June 5th, I participated in the Rotary Golf Tournament. It's a Moor Park Rotary, and it supports primarily the Boys and Girls Clubs of both Simi Valley and Moor Park. So did a little civic duty and lost a lot of balls. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my report.
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on May 16th, Tuesday, I attended the youth council meeting, and I, great work that they're doing, and I appreciate that Councilmember Rocky Rhodes had that assignment, because I didn't want it. It's, they're all outstanding youth, and all of them contribute so much. Wednesday, May 17th, I, too, with Councilmember Rhodes, attended the PTA, PTSA Council Honorary Service Awards Dinner, where recipients were received honorary service awards from all of the various schools throughout our district, and I thought it was very, it should be mentioned that our very own Simi Valley Police Foundation received an honorary service award from the, from the PTA Council District. They were appreciative of all the efforts that our Police Foundation does as well. On Thursday, May the 18th, I met with developers who have purchased the property that's up by Brandeis University, where they are proposing to put together a lovely senior project that has, it's a nonprofit development, and it has some very interesting possibilities, and so it was good to meet with them and see their vision, and more, I'm sure we'll be coming forward on that. On May 19th, Friday, I also, with Councilmember Rhodes, attended the Simi Valley Ed Foundation Teacher of the Month, where we awarded Lindsay Miller at Simi Valley High School. She is a biology teacher, and one of the things she does is, is willing to, over time, to have students come in after school hours and make up their dissecting needs, and so I, I thought, any teacher that does that just definitely deserves recognition. But that was in the morning. In the evening, I attended the first annual, and I hope it becomes annual, Youth Teen Wellness Night that our, that our youth council put together, and it was really outstanding. It was held here in the mall, in the common area, and they had representatives from all over to help with teen wellness issues and mental health issues, and I will tell you, it was, it was like a big block party, all of the wonderful things that were being offered, and I, I thought I was just going to stop in. I was there for several hours because it was just such a was there for several hours, because it was just such an outstanding event, and it was, again, entirely youth put together, and I hope it will become an annual event. On Saturday, May 20th, I appreciate attending the dedication to Pat Havens, our Simi Valley historian. What a, what an amazing, we are blessed and fortunate to have her in our community. Many communities don't have the history, historical records that we have. It takes someone with vision such as herself to do that, and I was glad that she was so honored. On Thursday, May the 25th, following week, I attended the, well, I, the VCOG Administrative Committee Meeting, of which I am the Chair of VCOG, and we discussed our agenda and some of the updates with REAP applications, et cetera, and interestingly, decided, knowing that housing is such an important issue, we have programmed, getting a better understanding of our area Housing Authority, how we can better utilize services, et cetera, and so that's on the upcoming agenda. On Friday, May 26th, I attended the grand reopening of Walmart Neighborhood Store, and it was actually quite a fun, fun party that took place over there on Tapo Street. I, I guess I didn't, I thought, I didn't realize why they were ever, they were never closed. They simply were celebrating that they have done remodeling, and they have a pharmacy, and it's, and it's just, they really updated things there, and what I appreciated, the way that they chose to celebrate is by awarding awards to nonprofits that were deserving, who are doing much for the community, and, and the police were actually honored with a $2,000 grant, which I thought was, it was wonderful to see Chief Shorts there, and, and his remarks were outstanding. Thank you. Bumblebee Foundation, $2,000. Sarah's House, $1,000. The Free Clinic was given $2,000. I just thought, it was lovely to have them give back, to celebrate their grand reopening by giving back to the community. I thought that was outstanding. Memorial Day weekend, I'm sorry, I missed some of the wonderful things that took place here, but I was in Utah celebrating with my son and his young family. On Wednesday, May the 31st, we had another, it was really June's Teacher of the Month Celebration over at Simi Institute Careers and Found, Careers in Education, and where we honored a teacher who is integral to their teaching English as a second language program and is one of the nation's finest, and so I commend her. I, I confess, most of the weekend, I was attend, I was involved with the American Harp Society. He has a national competition and summer institute, which was held in downtown LA, but it was fun to, to be able to share our community with, in fact, when I picked up a group from the airport, I had someone from Puerto Rico, from Ontario, Canada, Utah, and Missouri in my car, giving them a ride to, I mean, this is to our beautiful community, and of course, we talked about Simi Valley and all the great things happening here. But what that meant is that I was double booked, and so I have a big apology. I was supposed to attend the grand reopening of Trendy Me on Friday morning, and I missed it, and I want you to know, I still have the certificate in my car, and I tried to deliver it in person today. They are closed on Mondays, but I want to tell you about this, and I will go back tomorrow, but I want to tell you about this lovely new business in our community. It's, it is over, right by Trader Joe's, and upstairs, second, and you can see upstairs, beautiful, in fact, I peered through the windows, lovely clothing, they do, just tees and things, and anyway, fun stuff, beautiful clothing, and so my public apology to them, and your certificate is coming again tomorrow. On, let's see, actually, that was, am I getting, getting to the end? That's it, isn't it? Actually, what I wanted to mention and actually end with, one of the things that showed up in my box, and maybe Linda, this is a hats off to you, was the City of Simi Valley Economic Update. I think you were involved with this. Anyway, it's a, it's a beautiful document that really talks, speaks to the activity in our community, filled with lots of fun information, and I believe people can receive this if they would so desire. You'll email to them, they can get on our mailing, email mailing list, but it's, it's, I appreciate this document, which tells us how, really what's happening in our community and where trends are headed, and it was interesting. One of, one of the things I did attend, I skipped over, and I'm going to go back to it quickly, I apologize, don't mean to take so long. On Thursday, June 1st, I, too, attended SCAG's Regional Council Policy Committee. Actually, I'm on the Energy and the Environment Committee, and it was interesting, we had a report, part of my questions today about electrical vehicles is because we had a report that was very informative about what the state is expecting and where we're headed with trends, and we asked all sorts of questions, even everything from universal charging standards, which don't exist, to all sorts of things that are problematic. But one of the things I, one of the reports we also had was a draft regional planning policy that basically speaks to, I want to make sure I have this get to the right in my notes, I just wanted to share a little bit of information. It's talking about our growth projections for Southern California, for the SCAG region, and one of the things I found very interesting is that four years ago, there was a projected 18% population growth. That was four years ago. Today, the 50-year, the projected population growth is 9.1% population, which is a sizable difference in terms of regionally what that means for planning. And so, anyway, it was just, obviously, there's lots presented in the plans, but that affects everything from housing to transportation. If you are not planning for quite as many people, maybe you're looking more at quality improvement as opposed to quantity improvements, I should say. So that was, anyway, just a very interesting discussion. But I've jumped all over the place, but that's it for me tonight, I end my report, so thank you for everyone's efforts.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, May 18th, was a very busy day for me. So I started out at 9:00 in the morning for the Ventura County Animal Services Meeting. I'm the Vice Chair, and the Chair had to leave, so I finished up the meeting, but it was very interesting. We, the Ventura, VCAS, our annual report is out, so I urge anyone to go to our website and look at all the great numbers and all the great things that VCAS has done, V-CAS. One of the things we're really excited about is the architect is now working on the design for the new animal services shelter. Fiscally, we might not be as excited, because the city will have to pay its fair share of that, but it really, really is a necessary thing, that the shelter has over, it's past its prime in many, many ways, so it's time for a new shelter. But everyone, the volunteers and the staff there do a great job with what they have. I then went on to, at 3:30, we had our Economic Development Collaborative Board meeting in Camarillo. We're all in person now, so no more Zooming, which made life a little bit easier, but it was very, very nice. We have a very large board with members from every city in the, in the county, as well as two county supervisors on it, as well as private industry. And the interesting thing there is, we have grown so much, the EDC is doing such a great job, that we had to take over more space in the Ventura County Community Foundation Building. So we got to see our, we were sharing space with them. Now we actually have our own space on the first floor and our own space on the second floor, and we keep, we really, we're making a lot of fun, that we now have Sweet P. So Sweet P is part of the EDC, so that's kind of our new thing. We had a great time teasing Bruce Stensley, the CEO of that. Again, EDC, go to the website, there is so much available for small businesses. I just can't stress that enough. And then at 7:00 that evening, we had our Citizens Academy graduation. I was there to speak on the Police Foundation and to let them know a little bit about that, and one of the reasons the schools honor them is the Police Foundation historically donates for the Every 15 Minutes program that they put on. And then Mr. Mayor was there doing, you know, they want to see Mr. Mayor. I was just a substitute in case he wasn't there, but, so he did his great job, so I'm sure it'll be on his report. On Friday, May 19th, I had the honor of attending the Keneho Chamber Awards Gala. Jill Haney was one of the recipients as the outgoing chair, so it was very nice to see Jill, my friend, who used to be a manager here for Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, and then Union Bank, and she's still very, very involved in our community and the Chamber here on, and also, I believe she's sitting on the hospital governing board now. I think she took my seat, so that's a great job. Well, I took her seat, and then she took her seat back, so that's kind of how it worked, but it was very nice to honor Jill. And I'm really bad, I had never been to the zoo, to the Moor Park Zoo. I cannot believe, I know, I'm admitting it, live on TV. Oh my gosh, it was a great place to have an event, who would think, right? But I got to meet Ira, the lion, and, yeah, he's the lion. The two tigers were my Karma and Neil. Neil, typical guy, just sitting around the cage, just hanging there. Karma pacing back and forth the entire time. It was very interesting. But then I saw a skink, a skink, and then they had a tortoise and a parrot. I mean, they have tons of animals there. I didn't know what a skink was at first either. It looks kind of like a big lizard with a blue tongue. It had a blue tongue, I forgot about that, but she likes to be warm, so she kind of cuddled, but it was, it was very interesting. But I can't wait to go back up there during the day to be able to really tour the zoo. It was very, very nice, and, and I like zoos. I used to go to the L.A. Zoo when I was a kid all the time. On Saturday, May 20th, I just want to congratulate Donovan and Sophie. Sophie Klepper is the daughter of our executive assistant here in the City Manager's Office, and Bill Klepper's son, daughter, and they got married, so congratulations to Donovan and Sophie. And, oh, Lindsey Miller, the teacher you, I wanted to mention, her volunteering comes kind of from her family. Her parents, her family owns City Autobody, who's always been big supporters here. She played softball with my daughter when she was Lindsey White, so that's how come I know, but I know she's a great teacher there, so I was very happy to hear that she received that. On Saturday, May 27th, I enjoyed attending the Happy Face Music Festival here in Simi. It was very, very nice. Rotary Club Simi Sunrise did a great job on that. Good turnout, I think everyone had a good time. The music was very fun. I liked the group, the group that played ABBA music. They were pretty good. They even had costume changes and everything. It was, it was pretty much a good time by, by all, I think. And the PD looked like they were relaxed, so I don't think there were any problems. Chief's like, yes, good for that. This Thursday, June 1st, we had graduations all throughout the community, so I just have two special ones. Darla from Santa Susana High School, congratulations to you, and then Grant at San Aloa Middle School, congratulations to both of them. Their parents are very proud and happy of them, and it's well deserved. Yeah, it was a music festival a couple of weeks for me, because on Saturday, June 3rd, I attended the Wild Oak Music Festival in Thousand Oaks, which the Westlake Rotary Club put on. They did a great job. Mayor Pro Tem, Mike Judge, was there and was honored also as a veteran up on the stage, which was very nice to see him there. I was kind of joking that there were two council people from Simi Valley there, but I didn't hear any council people from TO. Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry, Fred, the Mayor, so three, three from Simi Valley were there, and I didn't hear any, I didn't hear any Thousand, oh yeah, three's too many, right, that's right. Well, no, I was joking that I was down in the peon seats, and they were in the VIP section, so, but no, it was a great thing, and our own Justin Hanzinger and his band performed, so that, he did a great job, and they had a really nice flyover, one of the Ventura County Sheriff's helicopters, so that, that was kind of a nice treat for everybody. And then my last thing is just, I attended the Confirmation at St. Rose Church yesterday, so congratulations to all those students that were confirmed. That's it for me, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a busy couple of weeks here. On Thursday, May 18th, I attended the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance Meeting down in Ventura. Not too much to report out of that. They're still working on some stuff. We did approve one of the vendors to keep on working for them, does all their advertising and puts together their festivals when they go out, when they go out to advertise at different fairs and stuff like that, so that was a good thing, because the guy's done a great job. On Friday, May 19th, I attended the Simi Valley, I also attended, along with Councilmember Rhodes and you, Mr. Mayor, the Simi Valley Leadership Class of 2023. I'm sorry, May 19th was the Trailhead Park Ribbon Cutting. They built a new trailhead sign at the Chumash Trail over on Flanagan Street, and it's a very nice-looking kiosk, gives you a lot of information about Simi Valley's history, about the animals you'll find out there on the trail, and even, even a lot of historical facts about the Native Americans that were here before us and what they did around our city. On Saturday, May 20th, I, too, attended the dedication over at our, at our Strathen Historical Park to Pat Havens. I was honored to present her with the city's honorary resolution. She was very touched and happy with it. It was, she was, she's well deserved. If you haven't bought her books or read them, you should go check them out. The library has them. If you don't want to buy it without checking it out first, check them out at the library and see, they're worth it. A lot of good history about Simi Valley. On Monday, May 29th, I attended Memorial Day Services, along with you, Mr. Mayor, over at Pioneer Cemetery, which we found out, or the mayor found out, that it is not called Pioneer Cemetery. If you Google it, it is called Simi Valley Community Cemetery, correct? Yes. So if you're Googling that cemetery, that's how you Google it. It was very nice. It was put on by our VFW and our, our American Legion and our disabled American veterans organizations. We had wreath lings by all the fraternal organizations in the city. It was always a great event, and it's, and it's, you know, it's needed. On Wednesday, May 31st, I have the honor of having three SCAG meetings every week now, for the first part of the month. I attended the Southern California Association of Governments Executive, I think it's called the Executive Action Committee, on Wednesday afternoon, and on Thursday morning, I attended the Regional and the Transportation Committee, the Regional Policy Meeting and the Transportation Committee Meeting. And when I spoke about electrification of vehicles and stuff, we were discussing that during Transportation Committee. Again, there's a lot of wait-and-see with that kind of stuff, because there, some communities have jumped right into the, the buying of the buses and have had problems, and so a lot of the other communities are waiting, are taking a wait-and-see as long as they possibly can. What else came out of that? Oh, and that was another big budget, start of a budget meeting for SCAGs. We, I think we ended up passing the SCAG budget, right? Yep, passed SCAG budget, too, so it's been a lot of budget approvals this, this month. Friday, June 2nd, I attended a Ventura County Transportation Committee Meeting down in Camarillo, and again, we did a budget approval, and we talked about electric buses, and I spoke to that earlier, where if VCTC is going to wait as far as, as long as they possibly can for the technology of hydrogen to come along, and that's what they're looking to go with. On later that evening, I attended the Leadership Simi Valley Class of 2023 Graduation, and it was great. I liked giving out the, we gave out a lot of certificates to all the people there. Yeah, what else? That's about the end of my report, but I also wanted to say, just to make sure I get this out, congratulations to all of our graduates from all of our schools here in Simi Valley. We hope to see good things from you in the future, and I wish you well, and best wishes on all your future endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see here. On Tuesday, May 16th, I, along with Rocky, attended the EOC Training at the Emergency Operations Center at the Police Department. Other than meeting the new Emergency Operations Manager, it was pretty repetitive for me. It's stuff, stuff that I've been through in the past, but it was nice to, to meet her and learn more about what they're up to these days. On Wednesday, May 17th, attended the Economic Development Committee Meeting with the Chamber, and then that night, I committed one event, but that got changed. I, I ended up getting invited to represent the city by the Consul General of Israel at the 75th Anniversary Celebration of the Existence of Israel, which afterwards got invited back to a private party at his house, which was really nice, and I got a chance to have some in-depth conversations, and there were other Consul Generals there as well, and in one conversation, the Consul General of Israel, the Consul General of South Africa, and the Consul General of Romania committed that the three of them are going to get together and come out, and I'm going to take them on a private tour of the Reagan. It was a really nice evening, and, and they all seemed well-informed and praised them, what a nice city Simi Valley is, so. Thursday, May 18th, I spoke at, and attended and spoke at the Simi Valley Police Department Citizens Academy Spring Closing Session. If you haven't done the Citizens Academy, I think it's a great way to see, you know, all, all the stuff that the Police Department is involved in. They don't just write tickets. They do a lot of really meaningful work in the city. Friday, May 19th, attended the ribbon cutting for the Simi Valley Leadership Class of 2023, and something about that project, they decided to do something different this year and, and gave a very strict financial limit. So what they had to do is find a way to do something meaningful and impactful on a minimal budget, and I think that they accomplished that, and it was, the part that I was most interested in was actually hearing from a member of the Jewish. It was a very interesting event. Monday, May 22nd, started with a, I had a meeting with Chief Shorts and City Manager Gabler and I to talk about bringing back the motor officer program. I can't give you specifics of it, because it's still in the works. What I did want to do for my fellow council members is kind of give you a brief overview of the stuff we did talk about, though. We talked about bringing back a program that's definitely smaller. We talked about the fact that some of the requirements here are going to be We talked about the fact that some of the requirements here are going to be, you know, proper training and recertification on an annual basis. But the whole purpose of this program is, or at least a key component of it, is targeted enforcement, which is something that I feel many people have approached us in the past, you know, suggesting that we need that, and it was a good conversation. It's in the chief's hands right now, he's putting together a comprehensive program that he's gonna then run through his staff, and, and then we'll go from there. But I appreciated having the conversation and his willingness to listen to our input on it, because I wanted to make sure that if we were gonna do it, we did it the right Then, in the afternoon, we had a, a meeting with Councilmember Rhodes and I regarding the budget, and as I mentioned before, I came armed with plenty of questions, and it was a good meeting. I also met with the, with a party that I'm not gonna really discuss, but about a possible investment in a program in the city, but that was a really good meeting, I don't know why I even brought that up, because there's nothing I can say about it. On Tuesday, May 23rd, this was a very interesting day. I spent the entire day at the Southern California Edison Campus. They had their PSPS exercise, and basically, I wanted to bring that up because they have made huge investments, since the problems we had with power being turned off during wind events, they have added, I think, 1,300 weather stations, all electronically dialed into their Emergency Operations Center, so they can monitor these things real time, and not have to predict, but actually do it real time. They have an Emergency Operations Center, which is huge, I mean, it's probably, I would say 10 times the size of ours, probably even bigger than that. During this exercise, what they were doing was testing the theory of how that would work, so in a, in a, where there's a wind situation that would affect their operating area, they would, all these people from these different departments have roles in this, and they brought together about 130 people that would be working on call at any given moment in a situation like that, to make sure that they didn't turn off any power they didn't have to, and that they had plans for how they were gonna deal with it if they did somewhere. When I mentioned that I was from Simi Valley, that got a lot of attention. I had some individuals there say that they owe us a big apology for the past, but it was one of the motivations on what they had experienced, and why they spent all this money, and they have gone in and hardened lines, and they've done so much work, I was really impressed by it. What they did say, and this is literally coming from the CEO himself, face to face, he said that, in his opinion, any of the events that we experienced in the past, somewhere between 90 and 95% of that will not happen in the future, because of all the work that they've done to prevent it. So it was a really good experience, and I know that there's, they're doing a presentation here coming up, you might want to go and attend that. Let me move on here, let's see here. I was traveling for a few days. Memorial Day, I attended Simi Valley, no, Cemetery. Unfortunately, it was, the most challenging part was finding it, I didn't know where it was, and by searching Simi Valley, or Pioneer Cemetery, there's no such thing, it doesn't exist. And so I accidentally ended up at the wrong cemetery, and almost sat in on the, on the And when, instead of the military coming out, it was Catholic priests, and I went, this, yes, exactly, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I didn't know where it was, and it didn't say anything on, on the invite. Yeah, let's see here. I went to the, on June 2nd, the graduation of the Leadership Simi Valley. That was a, what a, what a great group they had this year, that was, it was a very nice event. And then Saturday, June 3rd, again, the Wild Oaks Music Festival, which was a very good time, and I'd love to have an event that big and that, I mean, it was huge, and there were so many people. I think we need an event like that. Anyways, that's what I have. So with that, I want to adjourn tonight's meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. First, I want to call for any future agenda items. Okay. Then in that case, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Bill Davis, former Councilmember and Mayor. Good night, everybody, thanks for being here.